Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, October 8, 2019. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We are very pleased today to have Sarah McCollum, a grade 12 student from Western Canada High School, to sing "Oh, Canada." I would ask that everyone please stand and follow Sarah's lead.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True page of love in all of us command. Car ton bras s'apportait l'épée, il s'apportait la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillantes exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Sarah, on behalf of the Calgary Board of Education, I would like to thank you for taking time to come to us and share with us that wonderful rendition of our national anthem. Thank you very much.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blatford Nations, which includes the Sisika, the Bakani, the Gai'na. We also acknowledge the Sutena and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Métis Nation Region Three, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting today, representing our stakeholder groups. We have Bob Cocking from the ATE Local 38, Stephen Klukas, and Rick Petrovich from the Principals Association for Adolescent Learners. Welcome. And Gary Tink and Michelle Howell from the Senior High School Principals Association. Thank you for joining us today. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Miner, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following change has been requested to today's agenda, that item number seven, public comment, be moved to item number four, and the remaining of the agenda items be renumbered accordingly.
Thank you. Can I have a motion that the agenda be approved with these proposed changes? Trustee Adams, those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Today, we have one request for public comment. I would ask our speaker to focus on matters before the board today and refrain from speaking on the personal character or performance of any individuals, department, or school in accordance with our board meeting procedures. Ms. Pedan, please come forward to the podium, state your name and any organization you represent, and you will have three minutes to address the board today.
Thank you. Chair Dennis, trustees, Chief Superintendent Usie, all members of CBE Administration and Staff, and fellow guests, I thank you for allowing me this opportunity today. My name is Sarah Pedan, and today I represent only myself as a member of the public. I'm a registered psychologist with expertise in learning, the measurement of learning, and particularly the science of reading and reading instruction. I also run an online group called Dyslexia Support Calgary, but I can't say I'm representing that group today because there's been no time to put my comments in front of them for any feedback. I believe it's probably fair to predict that the targets discussed today will also become precedent or templates to be used when setting targets in the future. I predict that future target setting will consider the thinking that went into setting these targets. So I think that today's conversation is very important. There are two main things I'd like to hear discussed on the public record. One is the idea that provincial achievement test targets will be based on the cohort of test writers rather than based on all students. The other is with respect to the targets for grade six English Language Arts provincial achievement tests. I'm concerned about the difference between the targets for the cohort of all writers compared with the cohort of writers who are self-identified Indigenous students. The foundation of my questions about looking at results for all students versus writers needs to be set. We know that some students won't write, so we'll never have 100% of students having demonstrated acceptable or better achievement on PATs. So I can see why it might be tempting to set targets based on those who write. When you look at changes over time, however, if you consider all students, you will be making the same comparison every year in the sense that you're looking at the entire population. In contrast, when you analyze results of writers, you're looking at a subset of the population, and that subset will necessarily change every year. Since the group of who writes will change every year, the meaning of the results changes in unknowable ways. To me, and I believe many others, it's the achievement of all children that matters most, not the achievement of students who write tests. So here are my questions I hope you will discuss. When you set targets based on writers rather than the entire population, how does that align with the inclusive approach that considers all students and not merely some or most? How does it fit with the idea of success for each student, every day, no exception? And does it set teachers up to be caught between competing demands? There will be system pressures to improve overall achievement, but won't there also be pressure to especially improve achievement for those who write tests? What happens when, for example, in reading, teachers don't always know how to teach every student to meet the standards, and they know that the system is only looking at the results for PATs for those who write? So I wonder if trustees have considered or will consider asking Administration to include a statement that PAT targets always assume maintaining or increasing participation rate? In other words, will the board clarify that the target won't be considered met if the participation rate is even the smallest bit lower than it was in the previous year? And for grade six English Language Arts, I do wonder what message is being sent when we say that we aim to be rated as having improved with respect to the results for all test writers, but we aim to be rated as having maintained the status of test writers who are self-identified Indigenous students? As long as those students make the least change necessary in a positive direction, that we can be confident the increase isn't just chance? Because that's what you're really asking when you look for statistically significant change, just the least little bit that you know isn't by chance. So I thank you for your time, and I hope these questions will inform your consideration and debate.
As there is no awards or recognition scheduled today, our next business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is results to academic success targets. Chief Superintendent Usie, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, today's report, Results to Academic Success Targets, is the result of the board's request that the chief superintendent review the targets for this policy. Proposed targets have been included and are based on the new indicators approved on June 25th of this year. Trustees and Administration worked collaboratively to finalize the proposed targets for academic success in Calgary Board of Education. Administration has appreciated the efforts and the focus and honesty that drove this conversation with our board. At this time, staff would be happy to answer your questions related to this report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So trustees, any questions regarding the report? Trustee Hurdman?
Thank you. With regards to report card results and creating a baseline based on the 2018-19 report card results, why was this year chosen?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. The 2018-2019 results were chosen specifically to start a baseline because of the sense of urgency we feel to actually be able to analyze trend data. Recognizing that as a system, significant work has been done over the last number of years in relation to calibration of student work. However, we also recognize that additional work this summer has occurred to further support that. Starting with the reality of what our baseline is of 2018-19, identifying that in connection to the 2019-2020 data, will also provide an opportunity to determine if further adjustments need to be made to that baseline relating to those differences.
So just to follow up, you're saying that the baseline could change?
When we take a look at our 2018-2019 differences connected to 2019-2020, given this is our first year, I would expect critical analysis of that would be required, given the nature of your question. So I would want to indicate that we need to identify and look at that when we have that comparison.
Trustee Davis?
So two weeks ago, I think we shared some information at the Council of School Council meeting about the work you referenced this summer, and perhaps if you could just take a moment to talk about what was done, what the outcomes will be of that, and when that assessment changes will be visible to parents.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Davis. This past summer, we had over 100 teachers and principals working together with specialists along with Superintendent Yi and myself, related to developing assessment guides for K-9 for math and ELA. Those particular assessment guides are partially completed and were in fact released internally to teachers this past week, and are in relation to outcomes that span the year and focus on utilizing mastery, being on the four-point scale, describe the learning progression that a student would enter into a grade level as demonstrating and where we would wish to see them at the end in demonstrating full proficiency connected to those curricular outcomes. Within that work and applying it to the use of report card achievement indicators for the end of year, those particular assessment guides in relation to math and English Language Arts will provide guidelines and baseline for teachers to measure student performance. They do not describe specific tasks. They are related solely to the synthesized outcomes. In terms of parent accessibility of those currently, because they are not fully completed in that we have more outcomes that we are developing this work for, further communication in relation to the use of those guides will be available following January of 2020.
Trustee Hurdman?
Thank you. We know that test scores can sometimes go up and down, but we're just looking at single year targets. I'm wondering if there was any consideration given to longer-term targets?
So you're correct in that while two years of data give a comparison, three or more years of data allow for the possibility to identify trends. Once the data allows for the identification of a trend, our targets will need to be set for three and five years. So currently, with the new targets and our state, similar to the previous, our first question, we need to look at the three and five-year targets. And given that these are new sets, that is why, because we needed to have a baseline from which to begin, that will be the next step for us following this work.
Trustee Hurdleka?
So... Hmm. Okay. This is going to make for an interesting meeting. Just down here, I put my leg up in the air and my antenna or something. So we look to page three of eight, and to the point that was brought up by our speaker. Yeah, there we go. Good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, page three. Ms. Pedan had brought up a point that I guess I'll ask a question to in regards to English Language Arts VI. The acceptable standard improvement measure is improved, and if we look to further down on that page, for students who are self-identified as Indigenous, we have English Language Arts VI is maintained, and that there's evidence of chi-square value increase within the range. So can you just explain why we have a difference between those two groups of students?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdleka. In relation to the difference between the writers for English Language Arts VI with the measure being improved, that is our current next step in relation to writers. When we break it down into the Indigenous cohort specifically, the chi-square increase would indicate a significant level of improvement within the current, or sorry, would indicate a significant level of improved achievement. And when we're measuring the improvement measure, that is an additional component there. So our improvement measure is maintained, but our achievement would need to increase based on the chi-square value, which, as Alberta Education defines, is 3.84 statistical points above. And so utilizing that, we would still be seeing improvement within that target. That would be a requirement. Additionally, though, we would need to also then address the three and five-year trend, which would expect to see, or three and five-year target, to trustee Hurdman's earlier question, something else that we would need to identify specific to the Indigenous cohort.
Is that because of the small population? Does that play a role?
In relation to any of our individual cohort data, we're really looking at a smaller amount of population, and so to identify that as a trend looking within the value of the chi-square would be necessary as a valid measure of improvement within the maintained target would be an absolute expectation.
Trustee Hurdman?
Since we're throwing away our own chi-square all the time, would you mind just commenting on exactly what the chi-square tells us and what meaningful improvement would be using the chi-square?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. I apologize for my earlier miss there. Thank you for that question. The chi-square test is a statistical test that determines whether observed values are significantly different, and in our case and in the context of our targets, we're looking at improved than expected values. And so Alberta Education has standardized the chi-square value that indicates a significant difference is identified as being 3.84. Any test that results in this number or higher would indicate meaningful improvement. So when we talk about improvement within a target that says maintained, there is actually significant statistical improvement within that particular category as reflected in the target, and very specific reporting would be clear around whether or not true improvement had existed for that cohort.
Trustee Hurdman?
Just one last question. I noticed that some targets were using the improvement measure, some other ones were using the achievement measure, some the overall measure, and others were just a simple percentage of students. So can you just walk me through how you determined how to set those targets?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. So our achievement measures indicate actual results. So in the context of our report card data, those are actual results that are stated there. When we're looking at our improvement measures, we indicate a change in results, and those improvement measures are based on our standardized assessments through provincial achievement tests and diploma exams. Those overall, those particular ones reflect improvement, and that's why it is in alignment with Alberta Education language. The overall measures indicate a combination of both current achievement as well as analysis of improvement. And so based on the actual measure itself, report card data versus PAT or diploma exam data, that's why you see a difference in description related to those. And the determination of which measure that we would set the targets to was based on the data being used. So report card data being achievement, PAT, diploma exams being improvement, and the overall measure being a combination of both as applicable to our multi-year data.
Trustee Adams?
Just following up with that, when you say a combination of both, our report cards from kindergarten to grade nine are one to four grading system, whereas the PATs, I believe, come to us in a percentage. So how do you marry the two then?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. We actually aren't marrying the two in the targets because the targets set for report cards are specifically only to report card data. The PAT and diploma exams are a separate target, so we're not marrying the overall measure of improvement connected to blurring those two. We are maintaining them separate and setting separate targets. There may be opportunity to analyze how it is those are aligning once we have that baseline.
Trustee Rocha?
More of a comment than a question, I guess. I think this report came to us because last spring, we asked for some work to be done on the targets. You guys went away and did a ton of work, and we've got the new targets we were asking for. I think it's tough to look at these. I found it tough to look at these because they lack some context, which was not intentional, but it is what it is. I think these will make a lot more sense once they're connected to the R2 monitoring that they belong to. And we're going to, in time, I think we'll see a lot more refinement of the targets as we've got more data and we're able to kind of narrow down what we're looking for in targets. So I appreciate all the work that went into this, and yeah, this will only get better. Overall, we're going to have a lot more data to analyze, which is, I think, what everyone wanted, so.
All right, any further questions? All right. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Hurdman?
That the Board of Trustees approves the results to academic success targets as presented in this report, and that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the targets for results to academic success for board reaffirmation or approval by June 30th, 2020.
Trustees, are we all right to consider these motions together, or would you prefer separately? Together? I'm seeing nods for together. Great. All right, so trustees, do you have any questions about the motions? All right, so the motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the results to academic success targets as presented in this report, and that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the targets for results to academic success for board reaffirmation or approval by June 30, 2020. Trustee Hurdman, would you like to open debate?
I think trustee Bradshaw already did, but I'll continue. So approval of targets is something that is necessary inside our governance model so that there is a common understanding amongst the board, amongst the administration, and amongst our public as to what constitutes reasonable progress when it comes to academic achievement, when we're talking about results to. As a board, we focused on outcomes. We don't focus on the strategies or the tools which are used in order to achieve those outcomes. That is the domain of our chief superintendent. So when we're talking about the targets, we're really focusing on what outcomes we want to achieve, in this case, over the next year. As has been pointed out, this is a work in progress. The second part of the motion that we're debating right now is very important, that we continue to want to have these conversations. We continue to want to refine these targets so that we can continue these conversations around how we should be objectively looking, especially at trends over time. And I think that this provides another example of how this board is becoming more data-focused and looking for quality indicators of progress. And so I think this is a good step forward in the right direction.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Adams?
I just want to say, really say thank you to all of the hard work that Hurdman has done on this. I know it's been a long, long process, and you guys have put a lot of work into it, and really very much appreciate it. I'm very much, like Mike, I'm actually very much a visual person. I learn by doing. So I'm very much looking forward to even a sample one of how it's all going to kind of fit together, so just to help me work my way through it. But again, I'm very, very appreciative for everything that you guys have done, and I look forward to the ongoing process and see where this gets us.
Trustee Hurdleka?
So what I think is important about this report, certainly for the system, but for the board itself, is that our work is policy, and that's how we direct the system to do the work that they need to do, and to have strong policies with targets that we can look at year by year and seeing how we're progressing and moving forward or what the challenges are. You know, this is our work. We would like to get into all sorts of things within the system, I think many of us at times, and I think many of us have. And I mean, that is the importance of our governance structure and the importance of the policies that we have in place. So this just makes us stronger. This work by our administration, but also of trustees, is critically important for us to do our job, and so I'm very pleased to see this and to echo other trustees. When we get that report in front of us, I think to be able to actually look at the information that's there, I think will help me get a better understanding, but I think we've got just a great start here. So, thank you.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Davis?
So I think the work that was done this spring, with these targets, with the indicators, is some of the most important work the board will have done during its term, certainly from a public assurance point of view, that it's critical that we are looking at data that is valuable and representative. I appreciate the movement within the system to be open about acknowledging our gaps and understanding where they are and what we need to do to fix them. And I think that it is this process, actually, that engenders a lot of public trust in the work that we're doing. So I think this report and its foundation and the indicators will be critical for the next two years, but also beyond.
All right, second round. Any trustees for second round of debate?
I think it goes without question that as a public school system, we have to rely on public trust, and that public trust is based on the type of information and accountability which we provide. And I think this is an excellent step forward, and this will be an ongoing thing. This will always be with us, and it will always be a challenge, and we'll always try to get better. And that's just what we do. I'm going to use a little segue, if I can. October 5th was World Teachers Day, okay? And I saw Mr. Cocking and a few people putting out various tweets and things, and this was just excellent. But one of those axioms, or whatever you want to call it, that I saw out on the social media actually impacts what we're looking at today. And it said, "Teachers don't teach for the income, they teach for the outcome." And that's what we have here today. We're dealing with outcomes. I think it's a major step forward. I congratulate- I congratulate those people who did this work. Thank you very much.
Any other trustees for second round? I'll jump in then. All right. Also too, I'd just like to say thank you also for the work that was done on this, and just for the incredible level of dialogue that US staff had with us as trustees in answering our plethora of questions as we were working through this process and determining what this report will look like moving forward. Results matter, and certainly as governors of the system, we care about that most, right? And how do we know that our students are making progress? And so I do believe that this report, as it comes forward to us, will certainly help us to be sure in how our students are progressing. So I'm looking forward to seeing the report in action, and just thank you again for your efforts in this regard. Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Bradshaw?
I feel like I couldn't have a first round after some of the comments. I think myself is cutting-edge, but maybe too cutting-edge. So I guess this, you know, we've hired a new Chief Superintendent, and we've heard over and over again about closing gaps and raising the achievement bar, and this is how we're going to do it. We don't know, I guess we can't do that without knowing where we are. And so this is just, I think, great work. I think what everyone around the table wants, so it's great to see this being put into place. And yeah, I think we're only going to hopefully see things going up from here.
Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Heardman, would you like to close? No? All right. And I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a board development session on student mental health and wellbeing. Chief Usee, would you please introduce the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our trustees, in the Calgary Board of Education, we are committed to creating the conditions in which each and every student can succeed. To support student success, it is essential that we develop the collective capacity of CBE leaders to improve student achievement, equity, and wellbeing. Today, we'll hear from members of two teams who have been working to create these conditions throughout our system, with specific attention to student mental health and wellbeing. The two groups, teams you'll hear from are the Sexual Orientation and Gender Identity Team and the Trauma-Informed Practice Team. They're present in the room, and certainly, thank you for being here today. I'm sure the trustees are looking forward to your presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Dan Yi to introduce the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Usee. Chair Dennis and trustees, in today's session on student wellbeing and mental health at the universal level, we're going to explore work being done in the system to promote welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments so that each student can reach success. Every day, no exceptions. Over the past number of years, the Three-Year Ed Plan has had a clear vision on the importance of personalized learning. This inclusive practice supports all of our students to be known, and it continues to define our work moving forward. At this point, I'd like to welcome Cindy McNiven, Director of Inclusive Education, to introduce members from our Sexual Orientation/Gender Identity and our Trauma-Informed Practice Team, our SOJI Team and our TIP Team, if you're looking for an acronym.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome Rhonda Williams, System Assistant Principal for Welcome, Caring, Respectful, and Safe Learning Environments; Stephen Becker, Specialist in School Improvement, Trauma-Informed Practice; Ann Daniel, Specialist in School Improvement, Complimentary Curriculum Wellness; Tristan O, Specialist in School Improvement, Core Curriculum; and Sonya Fein, Psychologist in School Improvement, Sectional Orientation and Gender Identity.
When students feel like they belong, it encourages them to stay in school, to learn and succeed. Some of the articulated factors within the welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments include: healthy and respectful relationships are built and fostered; students feel that adults care for them as individuals and as a group; positive mental health is promoted; values, rights, and responsibilities are respected; diversity is respected, celebrated, and understood as a strength; children, youth, and adults model positive social-emotional skills, including empathy and compassion. Within the Calgary Board of Education, the Response to Intervention, or RTI, framework is used to provide evidence-based support at different levels. The underlying goal of the RTI model is to support academic, social, and emotional needs of students so that each student is successful according to their own ability. It is built on the premise that when universal supports are provided consistently for each student, the majority of students will thrive. As this visual shows, each student benefit from universal system of school-wide supports in the personalized learning environment. Those students who need more targeted support are accommodated within the context of their learning environment. Every day, we work together to create welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe school communities where each and every student feels a sense of belonging and experiences success in learning. On Tuesday, March 13th, 2018, the Calgary Board of Education Board of Trustees unanimously approved an amendment to results one. Mission: Amending the CBE's mission statement to include language which respects gender identity and gender expression. The new mission statement is as follows: Each student, in keeping with their individual abilities and gifts, will complete high school with a foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continued learning. You, as trustees, have made it clear that creating the conditions for each student to thrive is critical for fulfilling our purpose. You, as trustees, have intentionally named each student in order to emphasize the wide range of diversity within our student population. It is important to note that the Board of Trustees has defined diversity as the full range of uniqueness within humanity. Inclusive actions and accommodations for sexual and gender diverse students are guided and supported by legislation and public policy that defend human rights at every level within the RTI framework. The Alberta Education Act, the ATA Professional Code of Conduct, the Declaration of Rights and Responsibility for Teachers, the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, the Criminal Code of Canada, and the Alberta Human Rights Act all serve as important policies and legislation that reflect the need for Alberta School Board employees to act in ways that are inclusive and respectful of students, their families, and the school personnel with diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions.